Good evening and welcome to the Bloomington League of Women Voters Candidate Forum. My name is Martha Allen. I'm a trained volunteer moderator from the League of Women Voters of Minneapolis. So I've got no skin in this game. I don't care what you people say. It is my pleasure to be here tonight with you. Tonight's forum will consist of me asking predetermined questions to the candidates. The candidates have not seen these questions, although I bet they can anticipate them. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. And the answers will be timed. Just ask the school board candidates. I'm not nice about it. Okay. Our volunteers will hold up warning signs, and I've already told the candidates, when you see that 15-second sign, wrap it up. Okay. Because of the tight schedule, we are not asking for questions from the audience. If however, your question is not answered tonight, feel free to write it down with some contact information and give it to any one of the League ladies who has a button on that says "Bloomington" on it. And they'll be happy to give it to the candidates. Or as I like to say, this is representative democracy. You can actually ask the candidate directly when the forum's over. For each question, we will start with a different candidate selected randomly. We will switch the order after each question. In one question, the candidates will answer left to right, the next one right to left. Unless there are any questions, we will begin. You guys get that? Random, left to right, right to left?
Indeed.
Okay. We'll start off with one-minute introductions. Candidates, please introduce yourself and include which council seat you are running for. We begin here to my left with Richard Bonan.
All day. Yep.
Good. You're on.
Well, my name is Richard Bonan. I've lived in Bloomington now for 37 years. I've been through the Bloomington School Districts. I love the city. Take great pride living here and looking forward to serving the city. I'm a business owner. I own a couple of gas stations over in South Minneapolis, BP, and a new brand that's just been invented called Manoco. My wife is a schoolteacher. I have a lovely two-and-a-half-year-old little girl, and I have another one that will be being delivered in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Dwayne?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Dwayne Lohman, and I'm running for the first district city council seat. I grew up here, Bloomington, went to Valley View Public Schools, Valley View Elementary, and then graduated from Kennedy High School. I had the opportunity to be an intern for the city of Bloomington, learning about city planning. That's what got me interested in studying urban planning when I went to Augsburg College and got my degree in political science and urban studies. That also got me involved in items in Minneapolis, learning about how that city operates and works, which inspired me to get a Rotary Scholarship to represent the city of Bloomington and this great state of Minnesota. Hi, thank you.
Andrew Carlson?
Hello, my name is Andrew Carlson, and I'm running for the Bloomington District Two City Council seat. My wife Carrie and I have two daughters, both attend Olson Elementary School. I have an undergraduate degree from Iowa State University and a Master of Business Administration from the University of St. Thomas. I currently serve on the Bloomington Housing and Redevelopment Authority. In my professional life, I'm a project manager with a background in economic development. I am seeking election to the city council because Bloomington residents deserve a responsible leader who works skillfully to advance the common good. I believe every city council member should know their neighborhoods, engage in respectful conversation, and be helpful to citizens. And that's why I'm running for city council.
Tom?
My name is Tom Halting. I am running for reelection in District Two. I first became a Bloomingtonite in the third grade and have continued since. I grew up in East Bloomington, graduated from Bloomington High School, commuted to the university for four years until, from Bloomington, from East Bloomington, till my deferment ran out. Went to the Field of High-Velocity Metal, the Theater of High-Velocity Metal for two years, came back, finished up my degree on the GI Bill. Most of my career has been spent selling large ticket, computer-driven capital equipment to the regional, roughly middle-third of the US, engineering, manufacturing, scientific marketplaces. I bring a real-world perspective, a business perspective, to the position of city council.
Stop. Jack Baloga? Is it Baloga?
Baloga. Thank you. And I wish to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this candidate forum. My name is Jack Baloga. I am the incumbent in the third district, and I am seeking reelection. I have made Bloomington my home for 27 years. I have three children and four grandchildren. I have a bachelor's degree in both business and accounting from the University of Minnesota. I am retired following a successful business career as a real estate developer and small business owner. In addition to serving on city council, I have given more than 20 years of volunteer service to Bloomington, serving on many of its boards and commissions, in order to gain an in-depth knowledge of the city, which enables me to better serve its residents. In 2000, I founded a nonprofit which assists the unemployed in finding work and have served on the boards for many other nonprofits.
Thank you. Steve?
Hi, I'm Steve here, running the third district. 25 years ago, I chose Bloomington. I've raised a family, two children. My Wednesdays are spent with my grandchildren. My mentor, Ernie Larson, once said volunteering isn't just something, it's everything, and I surround my life with volunteering. I was asked to run, and I am so excited knocking on all the doors. I've been involved in the past with Neighborhood Watch, BeCat, the people filming tonight, the dog park, and many, many other things. Go to piersteve.com to see them all. I work at the Child and Gerology Foundation, so it's tough finding time to get everything in, and knocking on the doors has been exhausting sometimes, but I am energized when they answer. And I have had incredible conversations. I'm running because I believe I'm the better candidate, and the people I met have made me a better candidate.
Steve Peer? Am I doing this wrong?
Am I supposed to start?
Ken.
Ken Johnson.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was put, uh, it's the angle that I am. Yeah. I think your name is Steve Peer.
My name is Ken Johnson. I've lived in Bloomington, East Bloomington, in the same house for 48 years, and I've seen a lot of changes. And I've seen, one of the saddest things I've seen is the foreclosures in my neighborhood. And that's why I'm running. I truly believe that the people in East Bloomington are good people. They need a chance, and the city can't keep treating them like second-class citizens. That has to end, and I'm here to end it.
Thank you. John Olson?
Yes, I'm John Olson. I seek election to serve District Four. My wife Sandy and I moved to the east side of Bloomington in 2003. We live close to the pool and play areas in the wonderful recreation complex on 90th, just one of the reasons that our grandchildren love to visit us. My life has been wonderfully diverse. I've worked on a potato farm in the Red River Valley, delivered milk, been a camp counselor, and after college, worked for three churches as a youth director before starting a 33-year career as a public school teacher and principal. In some of my retirement, I formed a conflict management business. Family is important to me. I appreciate time with my three children and two stepdaughters, and I really like the time we spend with our 14 grandkids. So now you know why I decided to seek election to city council. We like our community in East Bloomington, and I simply must work for the good future of my grandchildren, and in reality, everyone's grandchildren. Wherever they live will somehow be better when I help secure a good future right here.
Thank you. Cynthia Bemis Abrams?
Hi, I'm Cynthia Bemis Abrams, and I'm running for the Bloomington City Council at Large. That is an open seat being vacated by Karen Nordstrom, who has served two terms and has chosen not to run again. I'm a lifelong Bloomington resident, and I have lived in all five zip codes of our city. I'm currently a self-employed public relations and leadership consultant, and I'm a member of the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce through my business. I'm a graduate of Minnesota State University Mankato and earned my master's degree at St. Catherine University. As a lifelong Bloomington resident, I attended all of Bloomington public schools, graduated from Jefferson, as did my kids, who also attended Oak Grove and Poplar Bridge and Oak Grove Middle School and Olson Middle School at one point. I've participated in many other school activities and was elected to the Board of Education about a dozen years ago. I have been a volunteer with BAA as well as a participant. Bloomington Sister City Organization, where we hosted Japanese students, and the Art Center Board. Lots of Bloomington things. Want to stay here another 30 years.
Stop.
Got a lot out there.
I mean it, people. Xavier Bickett?
Hi, my name is Xavier Bickett, and I'm a candidate also for Bloomington City Council at Large. First off, thank you everyone for being here and caring and wanting to learn more about the candidates running for city council. I really do appreciate it that you are being engaging. I've actually had an opportunity to meet all the candidates here, and finally today, Cynthia, for the first time today. And I truly do believe everyone does have the best interests of Bloomington at heart when it comes to why they're running for city council. Me, I'd like to provide a voice and fill a void of talking about liberty on the council. And what that means is providing a voice for voluntary solutions to city governance. And it's not going to be easy. When it comes to the elections, you need more than 51% to have voluntary solutions to city governance, and I hope by having a voice on the council and being a leader in a community, I can help do that. My background, I've lived in Bloomington since 1998. I married my high school sweetheart, Sarah. We both graduated from Jefferson, me in 2002. My work experience is a college admissions representative, helping high school graduates, also as a new business development.
Stop. Okay, the first question, we're going to start with Tom Halting, wherever you are, and then go to Jack Baloga and around this way, okay? Ending with Andrew Carlson, right? I hope you guys are in the right order. Okay. Question one. Our city delivers many services, from flu shots to firefighting, from snow clearing to the arts. Please name a service that would be better delivered by another entity of government or by the private sector. And if you want me to repeat the question, I will, or as we go along, if you need it repeated, just say so.
Well, I've thought several might be better delivered. Among them, certainly the arts, the health delivery systems, I think, as well. I know that in Bloomington, last year in the inspections department, we built 86 new homes. You round that number up for easy numbers to 90. Figure 270 working days in a typical year, 90 into 270. Once every three days, the phone rings for an inspection to be performed, and one of those 15 people in the inspections department has to go out and do an inspection. I believe inspections in particular could be done at considerably lower cost to the residents by private engineering contracting firms.
Thank you. Jack Baloga?
Thank you. I pondered the question while Councilman Halting was answering, and frankly, I can't come up with a service that could be delivered better by others, whether it be the private sector or other governmental entities. The city has a responsibility to deliver all the services that this community needs and desires, and to do it in the most effective and efficient manner possible. And I believe that it is currently doing that. Now, having said that, I believe that there are some services that we can find greater efficiencies in through the use of technology, and we will do that through time. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Peer?
Thank you. So Bloomington, I agree, is much more than just essential services. What attracts new families, vibrant folks to Bloomington are the amenities. What I have seen, listening in on the meetings, there was one meeting where some road services that weren't normally put out for bid were, and the prices came in, and the mayor said, wow, those are lower than I thought they'd be. Well, I'm sorry that that was a surprise. I hope we do it more often, and I hope that we're able to contract out as many services as we can at competitive, third-party prices.
Ken Johnson?
I was thinking about this list, and I really can't speak on any particular things. I would rather speak on a trend. I think that we need to look at all the services provided by the city and see if they cannot, I mean, can be provided better through the marketplace. As a businessman and as one who sells worldwide, I know what it means to have to produce a quality product and bring it in at a price acceptable to people all over the world. Now, we compete with Chinese firms, and we have people asking us from other nations for our product, to make our product for us, and we've always rejected it and stayed with American manufacturers, now because of the quality. Now, there are a couple of things I know a little about, and medicine should be left up to those who deal, who are trained in medicine, and we shouldn't be involved.
Thank you. John Olson?
Excuse me. I am not willing to ax any of our programs. Anything that is done needs to be done in a thoughtful manner, and I certainly don't have the information that would be necessary to evaluate all of the services that we have. We need to follow a process in anything that we do in city council so that we end up looking for good information, and if something needs to be eliminated or tried in a different manner, such as in the private sector, we can try that. Most of my career has been in education, and corporations tried to do education, or at least at some aspects of it, and in many cases, it did not work out well. So I would be very hesitant to eliminate something. The city has given the city good grades in terms of the services provided, and if we were to change, it would need to be done very thoughtfully and with research.
Cynthia?
I have to agree with Jack and a few others that by and large, our programs and those administered by employees are scrutinized, that there's evaluation that goes on, and perhaps it needs to be more arduous and held against whatever is available from the private sector. Many of the services that are delivered by city employees or any other government employee is not available on a service contract basis. Or if it were, it would be probably at a price much higher than what it is that we pay our employees. I do believe however, that there are electronic forms of service delivery that we need to continue working on, and also I think that we have city employees throughout the city, the golf course, for instance, where really what we have to do is say, are there innovative ways to look at the private sector and make our city-owned golf courses, tremendous assets, more revenue generating than they are today? Is there innovation, and is there a new market to tap on some of those things? So rather than saying cut, I guess I would say, let's spread the wealth and the great assets that we have in Bloomington and share them with anyone who wants to come.
Xavier?
Thank you. This is a great question because it ties in a lot with what I've been advocating for, on a voice for voluntary services and voluntary solutions to city governance. I was here at the city council meeting, this was last year, when we were talking about the tax levy, and I came up here, standing right there, and they were going over the cost of city services per resident and what you pay. And I was very surprised, and I mentioned this, you can look it up. I said, congratulations, I think the city was doing a good job on the cost of services per resident. We were actually on the lower end compared to all other cities when we were looking through this. Now, with that being said, I think we're doing a good job. That doesn't mean I don't think that there are voluntary solutions to some other aspects of city governance. If you look at the firefighters, the firefighters are doing it on a voluntary basis. We do pay their pensions, and I was looking at that actually recently with the Fitch credit rating for Bloomington, and the pensions are doing pretty good, they're funded. But volunteers, firefighters, and they're volunteer as well. I did agree with Tom when it comes to building exp-
Stop. Rick?
Yes, thank you. I believe that the city has actually ran very well. I think that the services that the city provides are essential, and a lot of them cannot be duplicated by the private market. But that being said, I don't think that we should definitely, I think we should definitely use the private market and compare to make sure that we are doing things the most efficient and cost-effective. One of the things, I was at the city council meeting last night, and we were talking, they were talking about the PMP, the Pavement Management Program, which in my opinion is probably a very good thing for maintaining our roads. My businesses are located in another city, and I will say that they have, I don't know what they're doing. I mean, they definitely do not compete with Bloomington as far as it comes as our infrastructure. I think that we're doing a stand-up job, and I think we should just continue doing that. Thank you.
I'd like to have you repeat the question, please.
Yeah. Our city delivers many services, from flu shots to firefighting, from snow clearing to the arts. Please name a service that would be better delivered by another entity of government or by the private sector.
I think that's an excellent question, and I think the most important thing we need to remember when we think about the great things that our city provides, that we believe in excellency here in Bloomington. And so I'd be reluctant to want to get rid of either of those, any of those services that we have. I think Jack really hit it right on the nail when he said that, you know, we really need to continue to keep these things around. But you know, I think one of the things that we need to do, and I'd like to do, when I get on the city council, is to be open to looking at different ways of doing things. I was a little bit reluctant when they went ahead and did the Bloomington Education System. When we worked along with Richfield in Bloomington to do volleyball, we got more people and we were able to work together. So there are some unique ways in which that we can work with other government institutions in order to provide better services, and I would be open to looking for those ways in which to do that, but not at the expense of excellency that we have here in Bloomington.
Thank you. Andrew Carlson?
Thank you. There are clearly services that the city needs to and should provide. Water is a perfect example. We all deserve safe, clean drinking water. That is not something that we should ever privatize because then that enters in factors beyond the public's control. That is something that we all deserve. Snow plowing is another example. We all deserve safe streets, and we leave it up to the professionals to decide in which those services are provided. So clearly, government has a role to play in providing these services. But that being said, there are, the public sector can't function fully without private sector contractors. The public-private relationship is very strong here in Bloomington, and there are clearly services that the private sector can provide better than the city, and it's up to the council to make those decisions as to what we outsource.
Stop, 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 stop. You mean it. Now, for this question, we're starting with Rick Bonan, and then going over to Xavier, going around this way, okay? Question two. What do you plan to do to help the homeless people in Bloomington?
One thing I think that we can do is to help the homeless is to make sure that we have a cost-efficient tax base that doesn't make them homeless. I think that's one of the biggest things that we can do, is make sure that we offer a good government and provide our core functions such as police, fire, water, and roads, while maintaining a good competitive tax base that will attract new development, which will bring jobs, which will help people not be homeless. The best thing we can do for a homeless person is give them a job and help them get back on their feet and make sure that they're a productive member of society. Thanks.
Xavier?
Thank you. And if you don't mind me asking, did you have a certain percentage that you knew of what the homeless rate was in Bloomington? Are you familiar with that at all? Did anyone?
I'm from Minneapolis. Does any of the-
Fair enough. To be honest, I don't know, and I don't know if anyone else on city council currently knows what that rate is. But depending on what that rate is, I mean, that's definitely something to concern about. I actually had a brother who was homeless, who lived in Bloomington, and he lived with friends and family that took him in and took care of him, and I think that that's something that we should do as a community. If you know anyone who's homeless, I mean, definitely want to give them the resources, where they can go, what kind of services and opportunities there are for them. It does touch on something that Rick touched on, is helping them find jobs. I mean, that's very important. If you can help someone pay their way and help them provide for themselves, that's something that we should be doing as a community. I talked a lot about how Bloomington had, from 2000 to 2011, a negative 8.5 job growth percentage, according to CNN Money Magazine, and I think if we helped with the jobs, we have some good things going on here at the Mall of America.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Yes, this question actually ties back to the previous question, and that is, where is the social safety net in the city of Bloomington? And it isn't necessarily within the confines of this building per se, nor should it be because as the city has grown, we have the great resource of VEEP, Volunteers enlisted to assist people. And they provide the social safety net, and they provide the conduit to Hennepin County and the Hennepin County Services that do exist to facilitate a road back to self-sufficiency for homeless people and all people in need. Food shelf, access to health services, whatever's necessary, as well as job training. So what VEEP does, apart from the city, it provides a tremendous asset in the millions of dollars that is not spent by the city of Bloomington in order to ensure that our social safety net is strong. I support VEEP. I think a lot of people in this room support VEEP, and they are doing some tremendous work, and that is the strength of the city of Bloomington.
John Olson?
Thank you. I'd like to start out by indicating that there are a lot of good things that are happening. Cynthia mentioned VEEP. Our church happens to host families three weeks out of the year who are homeless in a program that is supported by Beacon. It's called Families Moving Forward. We also have Oasis, which is a program that's working to help teens. And the basic concept that we need to pursue is that we need to end up providing the kind of help that is needed without ending up putting a permanent crutch into their lives. That means that training obviously needs to happen. Job creation has been a problem after this great recession, in that we don't have the kinds of jobs that some people are trained for, and so we need to be community to these people, but we also need to end up finding good ways to help them get back on their feet.
Ken Johnson?
As far as the homeless, we have at Smith Park, we usually have a couple homeless people living at Smith Park during the summer. Mainly, they live there because they can't take their dogs to a shelter, and so they live at the park. And you get to meet them and talk to them. The thing is that if we're going to deal with these people who want to keep their pets, well, the Hennepin County, I think, is the place they should be dealing with it and not the city of Bloomington. So I don't think that the city of Bloomington should build a homeless shelter. I think that's a responsibility. We pay taxes to the county, and the county should take care of that. One of the things that we need to do is quit creating homeless with the tax base that we have in Bloomington. We need to reduce our taxes so people can stay in their houses, so they can raise their families the way they want to.
A subset of the homeless that we're talking about have mental health issues, and so I just want to spend a little bit of time on that, that I am grateful that Bloomington has the healthcare system that it has, and that I will find out how compassionate the police are in recognizing homeless issues and spotting that so they are plugged into the proper systems and not treated like criminals. I too am grateful for VEEP and Loews and Fishes and some of the programs that directly serve. I've had a bit of experience personally. We seem to never have an empty bedroom, whether we're taking in educational students from Switzerland or from Israel. We've had homeless people staying with us, so I've had some firsthand experience with that as well.
Jack Baloga?
Thank you. The city of Bloomington as a community needs to provide a safety net for those who need it. it most, and the homeless fall in that category. And we do that through a number of ways. Some of it is such by the Health Department, who gives assistance to those people who are in need on a direct basis. On an indirect basis, which is where the majority of that support comes from, there are a lot of institutions that make Bloomington their home, and it's already been mentioned for quite a few of them. VEEP, Oasis for Youth, the Bloomington Community Center, which helps through Loews and Fishes and provides meals, Meals on Wheels, and many others. All of these are critical to ensuring that we have a safe, comfortable, vibrant community that helps support those of us who need it the most.
Tom?
I have been peripherally involved with Oasis, which, as Jack mentioned, is a team homeless shelter. I'm also chair of the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon of Bloomington. We have sponsored a 32-room homeless shelter for veterans dealing primarily with chemical dependency issues at the VA. We've mentioned VEEP. My sense is that private organizations, churches, and other civic-minded private organizations can do the best job in this arena, much better, I think frankly, than government bureaucracies.
Thank you. I'm going to provide a bit of a contrast to Mr. Halting's comments in that I think there are things that local government can do to assist the homeless, and the first is pretty simple. Raise awareness that there is homelessness here in Bloomington. It's not just an urban issue. City council can advocate for assistance, for programs to assist those that are mental—that have mental disabilities. And let's also not forget, we talk about job creation, but half—half of the homeless are children, so there needs to be programs to address that need. I would also advocate that this coming city council, even the current city council, set a goal to reduce homelessness. That's something that we can do as a community by tracking those numbers and bringing—that down.
Dwayne?
I'm not ashamed to say it, but I grew up here in—Bloomington and—I grew up in a single-parent family, and we needed to utilize some of the services that—that were provided through VEEP. And there were many other services that the city provided at that time to help our family to—to get by. With that also being said, there is a role that—the greater community can play, like VEEP. I support VEEP. I—when I got on my—on my—on my way, working for Habitat for Humanity, I got a chance to give back, and that's one of the things that we—we can do. We can set a goal, as Andrew has said, and we can also find creative ways, because we also need to keep—keep the taxes lower so that people don't lose their homes, so they can continue to live here in—Bloomington. And so the things that we can do for the homeless are not a government handout. It's about giving a hand up to those people and—helping us to—to prevent folks from— from going—to getting involved in those types of situations. And as my point says, jobs.
Stop, stop, stop. For question three, we're starting with Cynthia and then going to Xavier and then around to Rick, okay? Bloomington's population is rising.
I'm sorry, could you start it again? There's somebody coughing.
Sorry. Bloomington's population is rising. Is our infrastructure strong enough to handle continued growth? What would you make your highest priority to make sure our city grows in a healthy manner?
Our city—the population actually isn't growing. It's—it's reduced by about 3,000—3,000 people since the last 2012 to back to 2010, at least according to the figures that I was looking at. However, it is a—a city right now that has approximately 18% of our residents over the age of 65 and almost 19% under the age of 19. Those have very different housing needs. Infrastructure needs as well because they are the ones that have the shortage of transportation options, and they are the ones who perhaps have the most critical needs for their transportation. Our housing options need to continue to evolve to meet the needs of both lower-income families or middle-income families, as well as those who want to give up their houses, walk away —or—and move on but stay in the community, those who have lived in the community all their lives. So is our infrastructure in terms of housing where it needs to be? No. Housing needs to be a top priority because there are people who want to live in Bloomington, and we should make sure that they have every choice.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Sure. Bloomington's population is rising. Is our infrastructure strong enough to handle continued growth? Would—what would you do to make your highest priority to make sure our city grows in a healthy manner?
Met Council came out with their latest numbers on—and Steve, you would know because you're here—with the population, so I—I'm pretty sure—I remember seeing that as well—for the population dip, and they gave a projection out for—the Met Council came out with, and I don't think that the city needs to do too much to change for population growth. I know right now they're looking over construction over in the South Loop, putting in high-density housing near light rail, high-density housing for mass transit. When I look around Bloomington, if you've noticed any of the homes for sale, I think there's definitely a cer—enough places around for people to move into Bloomington if they really wanted to, and when it comes to what the city should be doing at that level, I don't see anything—in immediate need that we need to do to take care of that.
Rick?
Well, I'm not sure if the population is going up or down, but one thing I will say that I do think that Bloomington is an aging community. I think we've knocked on a lot of doors, probably all of us, and—and that's something that's definitely probably in the works, so I think that we're going to experience, for lack of a better word, a flip that's going to be coming up here. That being said, I think that we want to continue making sure that the permitting in the building and being able to add on to your house is—is very easy so we can attract new families and—and—and make sure, like, the development over on Penn American is going to bring some jobs, which is a very good idea in my opinion. And so overall, yes, I do believe the infrastructure is able to handle a population increase. Thank you.
Dwayne?
Regardless of whether or not the population is increasing or decreasing, Bloomington is the center of economic development that rivals both Minneapolis and St. Paul. We do need to invest in infrastructure. I mean, my ride home today from work, it took me almost 50 minutes to get from way over in Wayzata back—back to Bloomington. That's a little bit ridiculous, and I was taking side streets. So that doesn't mean that the city in itself has—as to invest. We've got to work in partnership with organizations like the Met Council and with other cities and collaborate unique ways of—of trying to build in infrastructure and working with the private sector in order to try to create creative and innovative ways in which we can deliver people from one location to another location. It's—it's critical that we do that as our population will grow and as we are a center of economic—of innovation here in the state of Minnesota. Thank you.
Andrew?
It's wonderful that people want to move to Bloomington and make this their home. That—that speaks to our predecessors creating a city that's a destination where people want to live and raise a family and retire. They want to stay here. I like to say that Bloomington's a very sticky city. People just don't leave, and that's great. They should be able to stay here. And what that means then is people need to have choices. People need to have choices in where they live. People need to have choices in how they get around town. The good news is, we're not all going to wake up tomorrow and the population's going to be 160,000. We're going to have time to plan, and we have plans. For example, there's the Bloomington 2025 Plan, provides insights in how we prepare for the future. We also have some examples of where we plan to have this development and this expansion take place, and I'll just mention a few—mention a few. South Loop over by—
Stop.
—the Mall of America.
I agree that we're shrinking some, and most of that shrinking is in the youth demographics. For the infrastructure, roads, utilities, sewer, water, police, fire, I think are all plenty adequate. Our housing stock is aging some and needs to be maintained, but I think we're doing a more than adequate job of that. There are a number of projects, and I thank Andy for giving us credit, those of us who preceded him. Number of housing projects along Penn and American, South Loop, and in other key corners of Bloomington that are very well planned out, and so I think there has been more than adequate preparation.
Thank you. Jack?
Thank you. Bloomington's population, as forecast by Met Council, will increase, and our infrastructure will be able to support it. We have focused our development activities in three redevelopment areas. Those I've mentioned a bit ago, but they are South Loop, Penn and American, and Normandale Lakes. Each of these districts is a multi-use redevelopment plan, including housing, commercial office space, and retail. It is because each one of these will leverage assets that have already been invested by the community in terms of transportation and other infrastructure. Additionally, we will continue, because we have an aging population in Bloomington, to need more seniors housing, and we are in the process of approving just that. Thank you.
Steve?
As I've been going over the 2025 Plan, I am impressed with it. I think it's the board's—council's job to take that each year and look at the economy, look at the individual needs of—of neighborhoods. For instance, on 84th, I know there was complaints about traffic from Normandale going through neighborhood streets that—that can't support that. As I talk to those residents, and I've knocked on many of those doors, the changes have been satisfactory. Interestingly, the complaints there and the complaints that I hear most throughout Bloomington are more about communication, about people getting plugged in, not at the 11th hour, when there's little one can do, but at the first hour, so that they feel engaged in—in the plans that change to accommodate their neighborhood.
Ken?
In East Bloomington, I think we need more to do with getting the roads that we have in the best operating condition. Our streets are not in that—not well-maintained. We have lots of potholes and the street—is street is between the curb and the ass—the pavement. You can see the street where it's crumbling. We have Cedar Avenue going down to the river, where we have potholes the size of bushel baskets. Just—the streets are in very poor shape in East Bloomington. But one of the problems I need to bring up is the Planning Commission. Planning Commission okayed the sale of North Gate School to Al Farouq for the center, and they didn't take in consideration that they could—the streets were—there's no main street. It's a landlocked facility, and therefore—
Stop. I'm sorry. John?
Thank you. My understanding of infrastructure—excuse me—seems to go in a little different direction, so—in terms of transportation, I think it's important that we consider tying in with light rail and other rapid bas—rapid—rapid bus transit and—and things like that. In terms of—it seems to me that with some exceptions, and I know that going down to Old Cedar Bridge is—is bad, but for the most part, I think the city is doing a good job with its sealing and—recoding and that kind of thing. Water, we have an excellent water treatment facility. We have an agreement with Minneapolis, so we've got that taken care of. The pipes underground, I believe, are being inspected. That could be a problem. Electricity went to a presentation by Excel in terms of storm preparation. And regarding housing, District Four is ripe to have a lot of housing development, so I certainly would work for that.
Thank you. For question four, we're starting with Steve Peer, then going to Jack Baloga, and then around that way, okay?
Say again, please.
I'm sorry?
Say again.
We're starting on this question with Steve Peer—
Okay.
—then moving to Jack, moving—
Okay.
—this way. Jack? All right? Question four. In recent years, many people have complained about the number of garbage collection vehicles that travel through our neighborhoods. Please share your thoughts on the economic and environmental impact of the current setup and what actions, if any, you would support?
That is something that's come up on many doors I've knocked on, and I said earlier I love diving into these things. I have called and talked to a number of the trash haulers. I have talked to many of the residents about their best ideas and—and put those together. LA just divided their city into 11 segments and—last year, so I've got calls in to see how that's working, even though it only had been one year. Let's see, Oklahoma has a city that divided theirs into four, and so there will be some precedence to see how this works. The big challenge is some of these trash haulers weigh—the equivalent of 1,400 cars going by, so it's the wear and tear on the roads versus the free marketplace, and so that's—that's the challenge, and I think others have—have figured some ways out. I'm going to be studying those to bring the best ideas to Bloomington.
Thank you. Jack Baloga?
Thank you. I feel like I wrote this question because in May of 2012, I brought this issue before council, and council has subsequently agreed to it, and we have engaged a consultant to help the city study this issue. It is—when—you—when we look at it, my concerns were multifaceted. Public safety. We have extremely large vehicles, and we have our streets populated with young children. We have environmental concerns. These vehicles spew a lot of noxious gases. They also emit sound pollution. We have the wear and tear on the streets, and lastly, I believe that this is a way that we can pass savings on to the residents of Bloomington by having a different organizational method in collection and reducing the cost of waste while improving—
Thank you. Tom Halting?
For people who want municipal solutions, mine is not appreciated. Simply said, I have done in my own neighborhood and have encouraged a handful of other peoples to successfully walk their neighborhoods, their cul-de-sacs, one or two blocks with a clipboard, and ask each of the neighbors if they could—no—if this person could negotiate a better rate for them, would they be willing to switch to that one service? In each case, that has worked out for lower rates for everyone. There are people who sit at these companies, who look to negotiate bulk rates, and in fact, that done, you've reduced the number of carriers, you've reduced the pollution, you've reduced everything else because the neighbors—because the other vehicles, the competing trucks, don't come down a neighborhood where they have no customers.
Thank you. Andrew?
Yes, thank you.
No, they don't.
I'd like to thank Jack for—for bringing this—this issue forward so that it can be properly studied, and I—I do look forward to the consultant's report. That's something that I will be interested in seeing, what—the—what conclusions they draw. The important thing to—to keep in mind here is, we want to preserve choice. Choice is important. We want to give our residences—or—I'm sorry, our—our citizens a choice. Now, that being said, we need to weigh that against what could be the benefit from going to a municipal type of service. So this is not a clear-cut issue. This is something that I think does need to be studied and should be studied closely, and from that, it will be—it'll be a tough decision to make.
Thank you. Dwayne? Loman?
I want to let the residents know that when you call, I'm going to listen. And just from walking across the, knocking on doors, I've learned a great deal, that there is a great deal of diversity on this opinion. I do think that it's important that we have an economic marketplace, and we support that, that capital system. However, I think that is the goal of the city. We should set a goal in which we can try to, as we do our studies, to look at ways in which that we can better take care of our environment from a long-term sustainability. That is also an economic issue as well. And so if there are ways in which that we can find ways to create tax incentives for certain quadrants, for people to work in those different quadrants or areas, to work together in a collective manner, as Hulking has mentioned here, to best, to provide things. We also need to have some types of standards around environmental concerns with our own infrastructure. That's what's beating up on the, up in the 4th district and the 1st district. Thank you.
Rick?
This is one of those issues I would be looking forward to actually hearing from more constituents. I can see it both ways. I can see that it's wear and tear on the roads, but at the same time, I can see that these big diesel dump trucks pay a lot in diesel tax, and that diesel tax goes to help pay for the roads. So, there are arguments to be made on both sides, and I guess the way that I would handle the situation is I would really like to see the results of the study and also hear from constituents. Thank you.
Xavier?
I like what I've heard around just people being open to choice, which is something I definitely will be an advocate for. And I like that this was brought by Jack, because it is something I have actually heard as well. Some people really do not like the noise. I met with the Bloomington Sustainability Coalition, and this was a question that they had also on their survey about, I said that there is no doubt that it does have an environmental impact in the wear and tear on the roads. However, I wouldn't support a monopoly for a certain trash company to come in and be the sole provider in Bloomington. I do like Tom's idea of residents grouping together and building coalitions to get a group rate or a coalition rate when they get pricing. I think that's an excellent idea, a voluntary solution to this, and so I thank you for that idea.
Cynthia?
Well, I think, first of all, it's great that we didn't go to our in-house garbage consultant person who's employed by the city for this. We sent it out to a consultant who's probably studied this nationally. And it does fall into both the free market philosophy, which really does exist here in Bloomington. There are many, many services that the market enjoys as a result of serving the residents, particularly in the single-family homes. The consultant will come up with a host of options, I hope. I hope that he or she presents us with perhaps some of the best practices that will become national leaders, if we choose to engage them, if we choose to begin having an honest dialogue and get to the neighborhoods. As a result of whatever that process is, our neighborhoods and our residents are going to have a better understanding of both the impact that those trucks have, because that would be what the consultant should deliver us as well. Because right now, we really don't know. We just have a hunch. And maybe the result is, is that the neighborhoods do a better job of banding together, and that those who can't necessarily negotiate, find someone in their neighborhood night out group.
Thank you.
And do it for them.
John?
Thank you. I believe that we have five haulers that go on our street, which ends up meaning that at least on some weeks, we have three stops. That ends up being 15. One hauler, one company, would end up meeting three, which makes a whole lot of sense. How do we get to a point where we use some common sense here, I think, is the issue? And the process is exactly what it's all about, and it's the way that I would approach problems like this, if on the council. We need to bring people together who are stakeholders. That means get information from the neighborhoods. Maybe it could be through survey, it could be through discussions. Education needs to be a part of it, so that people know what the costs are. But we also need to bring in the haulers, and that ends up meaning that we might be able to have some kind of a process where there's a bidding, or that haulers would be able to otherwise select.
Ken?
Well, common sense dictates that if a person could go down the street and pick up at every house, he could save himself some money and make more money. He'd have less costs, because his truck travels less distance, and he'd pick up more trash so that his truck would fill faster and he would make more money. I'm not afraid of people making money. I like people to make money. And so, to me, it seems to make sense that if we could divide the city up into reasonable areas and let trash haulers bid on per-house basis, the one who bids the lowest, the most competitive, he should have the job.
This is the fifth and last question, and the way the lottery went, and we're starting with Ken, and then we go to John, then around this way. Going full circle, back to our first question, this time, would you name one service currently provided by the city that you believe should be immune from any cuts, and why? One service?
None.
Don't cut it, and why?
None of them. Pretty simple.
John?
Thank you. Do I get the rest of his time?
No. No, you don't. Sorry.
Nice tray.
We're coming full circle, and I'm going to come full circle on the way I answered it. We should not make decisions that are black and white without doing a very careful study of the pros and cons. So, I'm not willing to vote for anything to be immune. I think that a community requires quite a few services. Glass of water was held up a while ago. We've talked about roads. We've talked about housing. We need to have quality in every aspect of human life, and so the community has decided that the city government should end up doing some of that, or oversee that. So, I'm sorry to disappoint anybody who wanted a black and white answer, but I've got to say, we've got to study it and then figure out what's right, and probably not eliminate anything or make it immune, but...
Stop. Okay. Cynthia?
The only immunity that should be granted is to the police department. That is an entity of public service that is the core function of a city, provided to its residents, its visitors, the thousands of people who come to our hotels, who come to our stores, who come to the Mall of America every single day. They deserve a safe environment. They deserve the opportunity to have an officer at their door within about a minute of the 911 call. That is extraordinary. That's tremendous service, and they are the hardest working there at the front line, putting their own lives in jeopardy. As we think about the rise in gun use, the safety at the schools, knives, and people bullying, and people being out of control, both online and in person, our police force is A-grade.
Xavier?
I like how John answered that question, just being thoughtful and considerate, and I, but I also agree with Ken. I don't think that there's any one service that should be immune to cuts. And Cynthia talked about the police department here recently, and when I was out door-knocking on Elliot, there was a lady there who was a veteran, and she, I spent a long time with her, almost 30 minutes, and she had recently made a donation to the police department anonymously, and donated money to purchase the latest canine dog for the police department. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that, oh, we need to cut the police department, but I think that's one area where you can see the community coming together, noticing there's a need, and offering a voluntary service, and donating out of their own pocket for this. I didn't ask how much it was, and she wanted to remain anonymous, but there was an article about it in the paper. I think it does need to be thoughtfully considered, but I'm not...
Stop. Rick?
Yes, I agree a lot with John and Ken also. I think that it would be foolish not to look at every aspect of the city, and if you can trim costs, you know, not do it because of the fact that there's immunity. With technology and with things, sometimes that brings a more cost-efficient way of doing things, and you might not need a big of a budget because of the fact that there is something that saves money. So, I would have to say that I don't think that any of the services are immune to cuts, because I think that, as a family, I think that we always have to cut our budgets and trim our budgets to meet our needs, and I would like to think that that kind of same mentality will apply to city government. Thanks.
Dwayne Loman?
No, just thinking about that, but I think about the Mall of America, and I think about all the shootings that have taken places in schools. And, you know, I've got nephews and nieces that attend schools, and I'd want to make sure that the police department is, I wanted to make sure that I did everything possible to make life safe for them. So, while I agree with John, in the sense that, you know, we need to, there's some core things that we really need to be, need to protect, like fire and police, and, you know, I would want to make sure that we had done everything we possibly could do, and from a public safety standpoint, to be able to, and of course, then it gets into infrastructure and roads. Can we get the police to get there? So, if you don't invest in those roads for fire engines and police department to get there towards that, you've got a real problem. So, I don't know what you could make that would be immune, but I think you've got to start from the top, and then everything kind of flows out from there. So, I agree with what Cynthia says. You know, I would not want to be the person who cut the police department.
Thank you. Andrew?
This is a budget question. As the city council, that's their responsibility to be fully engaged in the budgetary, the budgetary process. This is a, this is an exercise that occurs every year, and it should be taken very seriously. In a situation like this, obviously, where funds may be limited, you obviously want to prioritize on providing those core services. We are very fortunate here in Bloomington to where we can take on some of these other key indicators that provide us with a high quality of life. And we, again, this is, this leads, this is a nice tie-in with some of the other questions. This is a destination. This is a place where people want to live, and our local governance is behind all that. That is what allows for this high standard of living that we are also fortunate to appreciate here in Bloomington.
Tom?
As I heard the question, I think it's less a budgetary question and more just a philosophical question. I don't think any one service, as I understood the question, should be immune from cuts. That said, however, I do think there are several services that should only be done by the city. Those include police, for sure, at the top of the list, fire, public works, including water and sewer, and then the pavement management program, maintaining the roads and infrastructure. There are others that don't fall into that category, but each of those do, and I think those are all best done by the city.
Jack?
Thank you. This is a very interesting question, and the city council doesn't do this in a vacuum. What the city council does is review all of the services that we provide to its residents, and we really use resident feedback through the resident survey. That survey tells us which services the community is performing that are important to its residents, how we're performing them, and where we can improve some other services. Quality of life came in for the past two years at a 90% rating. The principal reason for that quality of life is that people feel very safe, very comfortable, very secure, both day and night, both at their home and in their workplace in Bloomington. If I had to pick just one area to make immune from cuts, I couldn't do it. I would make it police, fire, and EMS.
Stop. Steve?
Thank you. I think our job's to listen, so it's not only listening to the residents, but listening to the city experts, and I agree with everyone that talked about the process here, that at the end of the process, this is a value proposition. If the question's about saving money, a friend of mine once said, "Buy right, cry once." And I would hate to have Bloomington cheaping out here and there to save money. Everything should be looked at as a value proposition, and I believe that's exactly what the budget process is, and I would engage in that, not only with the constituents, but with the experts and the city officials.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody. Thank you for being succinct. This concludes our questions. Each candidate, again, now has one minute to offer closing remarks. We'll do it in reverse order, starting with Xavier Bickett, and ending up here with Rick Bonin. Xavier, you're on.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you all, everyone, again, for being here and being engaged with the process and caring enough to, whether it's watching at home or being here, to listen to the candidates one-on-one. I will stay after. If you want to ask me one-on-one questions, if there's maybe something I didn't get a chance to finish. I do congratulate everyone who was able to answer questions in the short amount of time we were given, and I wish there was more questions and more topics we could actually have a conversation about instead of these soundbites. Unfortunately, just for time, that's how it goes. But again, just, no matter, no matter who gets elected, for me, it's not necessarily about what the results on November 5th are. You know, I look at Bloomington as a long-term proposition for providing a voice for liberty in the city, whether it comes from property rights, economic liberty, you know, your property values, your property taxes, how your neighbors may affect your property values. That's the kind of voice I want to be on the council and look forward to in the future. It's not necessarily about what happens on November 5th, but more of a long-term, long-term solution. So, again, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Thank you. Bloomington is a very well-run city. It's a well-run city because we have a top-flight professional staff, and we've elected people over the course of the last 20, 30, and 40 years who, first and foremost, have the interests of Bloomington at heart. They come together from all spectrums of the political arena, and they recognize that there are challenges, that there are opportunities, and that the future of Bloomington needs to remain strong. We have a vital tax base. It needs to be stronger. We have vital neighborhoods. They need to look a little better. We have housing stock that is neglected. We have neighborhoods that need to better align, or I should say, we have neighborhood retail centers, strip malls, that need to better align and meet the needs of the areas that they are intended to serve. Dollar stores and pawn shops just don't do it for me, and that, as a lifelong resident, is something that really aggravates me. Traditional leadership, legacy leadership, this is a tremendous community, and I look forward to serving you on the Bloomington City Council.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. Thanks to the League for this service to the community. Well-informed voters are important to a healthy democracy. I volunteered a lot in this, in the city, in the 10 years that I've been here. Chamber Outreach Committee, Rotary, my own church, Valley View Middle School, in terms of mentoring, reading students. I've learned a lot about how the city operates in the Planning Commission. I'm in my fifth year. It does not have the power that was suggested, but I believe that I have the problem-solving ability and the ability to work well with all kinds of people. I'm the kind of person that wants to involve all the stakeholders in making decisions, and I believe that District Four, as Ken indicates, does deserve more attention than it has had in terms of development, and I certainly will be a thoughtful and bulldoggy type voice.
Ken Johnson?
In the closing minute, I'd like to talk about the subject that we did not talk about, and that's taxes in Bloomington. We have this little survey, came out in a brief, and it says that how wonderful we're spending our tax dollars, because Bloomington is only paying $67.82 for the services per month for the medium-priced home. But the medium-priced home is only $180,000. If you were to go to Eden Prairie, where they pay $94.68, the medium-priced house is $396,000. So, this is a distortion of reality. I would also like to bring attention to the whole survey, because what we're doing is we're going to base our next, by, next year on what was published in this brief.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you, League of Women Voters, that this is an important event. I was president of Chad National, Children, Adults with Attention Deficit, in Washington, DC, and worked through some very difficult years, and had to spend a lot of time collaborating and healing the group and connecting... and healing the group and connecting. I think what I can bring is communication. It's great that we have surveys, but there's nothing like going out there and knocking. And I'm always surprised when I knock on a door, they say it's the first time anyone's knocked on their door in years. So, my commitment is to listen and to bring those voices to the board, to the council, and also listen to the experts. Bloomington continues to impress me the more I dig, so I want to respect the city folks that have done the work and present to us, and bring all voices to the table, and not vote until every voice is heard.
Thank you. Bloomington will continue to evolve and renew itself in the future, just as it has done in the past. It must do this to continue being a destination city. Bloomington will need knowledgeable, experienced, and effective city council members to ensure all these future changes will be desirable for this community. These policymakers must know and understand how the policies they enact will impact upon and meet the needs of its residents and businesses. When elected, I will continue to use my, the knowledge I acquired through my years as a city council member, and my service on the various city boards and commissions, combined with my business skills and experiences, to ensure that Bloomington continues to provide the outstanding services that residents want and desire at reasonable and affordable costs. I ask for your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Tom?
If you believe the League of Minnesota Cities and the Hennepin County Tax Database, Bloomington residents and business owners pay 62% more to the city than our counterparts in Edina for comparably priced properties, and 40% more than our counterparts in Eden Prairie for comparably priced properties, assessed properties. $500,000 house, $500,000 house. $2 million business, $2 million business. We need to bring the costs of city government more in line, thus reducing property taxes, both for longtime residents, so they can stay in their homes longer, as well as for businesses. Fill up the businesses we see empty storefronts, industrial sites, and office space that we see all over Bloomington that we don't see in Edina and Eden Prairie.
Thank you. Andrew?
Thank you. In closing, I'd like to remind Bloomington voters in District 2 that you have a real choice in this upcoming election, and that your vote really matters. By voting for me on Tuesday, November 5th, we can replace the current incumbent's narrow partisan agenda with my sensible approach to government. I want to see this new council continue to be good managers of public services, and to work diligently to help our city remain strong and prosperous now and into the future. Bloomington is a wonderful city, and I would like to help keep it that way.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. I'd like to thank all the citizens that are here today. I love this city. This city started back in 1818 with settlers that came here, and other folks who looked like me, who were Native Americans. And they banded together and they worked overtime to create a kind of city of, that's lit up with growth and prosperity and opportunity. And that all has been managed by wonderful leaders who've been here in this council. I still think that our best days in this city are still ahead. When we invest in our city and work as citizens and get involved to improve our cities, we will see a better city. We can't work on a philosophy of cutting and cutting and cutting. We must invest in our future, and that's what I'll do to continue the strong legacy of Steve Peterson and Neil Peterson. Thank you.
Rick?
I love this city also. There's nothing more comforting than when you go on a vacation for a couple weeks, and you come back and you're driving down 98th Street, and you just feel home, you know? It's just, I've never got a feeling from any other city like I have here. I'm going to raise my two daughters here. I'm looking forward to putting them into BAA Sports. I'm looking forward to put them through the Bloomington School District. I'm not planning on leaving. What I am planning on doing is doing something different than what we are seeing politically in Washington, and that is working together with any one of you that is elected here to make sure that we do come up with common sense solutions, and make sure that the betterment of Bloomington is always going to be first. I want to make sure that I use my business experience to maintain that Bloomington always has a great quality of life. Thank you. I'm Rick Bonan, and I'm running for District 1.
Thank you, everybody. We appreciate that you held to the schedule so diligently. We wanted to make sure that each, each of you got the same amount of time, and we thank you very much for that. Our partners tonight are the City of Bloomington and the Bloomington City Information Television. This forum will be rebroadcast on Channel 14 many times from now until Election Day. Information about broadcast times will be available on the Bloomington League of Women Voters website and the city's website. This concludes our forum. Thank you for watching, and be sure and vote on November 5th on all the issues and all the candidates. Thank you very much. [applause][1714.65]